Councilmember Toby Gilli has our prayer and pledge of allegiance. Mr. Gilli?
Thank you, Mayor. If you bow with me, please. Dear God, I most loving heavenly Father, we thank you so very much for this wonderful day and this beautiful weather that you've given us and for allowing us to live in this great, great city of Murfreesboro. As we come here tonight to make decisions for our community, give us your wisdom and your guidance. Father, we ask you to be with all of the members of the city staff and all of our employees as they strive every day to make the lives of the citizens of this great city better. In your Son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty, peace, and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to Murfreesboro City Council, May the 9th, 2013. We have, I think, finally gotten to mid-spring, and so everything is green and lush outside. And I think in keeping with that, that Ms. Shannon Logan has a little announcement for us tonight to our Stars Award winner for this month, right? For last month.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, and councilmembers. And I'm proud tonight to present our April Stars Award winner. And I'm going to give you a little bit of background and history before, Mayor, I'll ask you to come down and present and have our chief come up. But our Stars Award winner is Sergeant Scott Newburg of the Murfreesboro Police Department. Sergeant Newburg is a member of our Special Operations Unit. And Sergeant Newburg was nominated because of all of his work with his Code Red and Active Shooter classes that he has done for the city schools. A little background is that I was fortunate enough to go through Sergeant Newburg's class back in October as part of Citizens Police Academy. And that was obviously prior to the incident at Sandy Hook. And he had already gone through and was working on revamping that program. And of course, after Sandy Hook, that program became more of a at the forefront. And Sergeant Newburg went through and was went into all of our city schools and worked with every teacher and every principal in the city schools on the Active Shooter program and what to do during a Code Red. He, along with Sergeant Kyle Evans, performed a security review on each of our schools. And he is continuously working with our school system and with our city government on trying to make sure that we have the safest facilities in the city of Murfreesboro. He has made this one of his passions and efforts as part of his job for the city of Murfreesboro. And it's just a reminder to all of us that I know sometimes we always think that police are there to maybe arrest us or solve things when they're going bad, but they're also there and they're primarily there for us when things are good. They really are there to serve and protect. And I think that you'll find that the members of the Murfreesboro Police Department try to do that every day. I'm very proud of the members of the Murfreesboro Police Department, and I'm very proud tonight that we get to honor Sergeant Scott Newburg for his work and for being a service excellence star. So if you could come down, we'll have Sergeant Newburg come up. And I'd also like to have Chief Glenn Christman say a couple of words about Sergeant Newburg before we present his award.
Thank you, Shannon. I don't know that I can add much to what you've already said. Scott certainly is one of our stars at Murfreesboro Police. He has worked tirelessly on Active Shooter and Code Red, and will continue to be doing some work on that toward the end of the school semester. But I think everybody certainly across our nation was touched by school violence and the issues connected to that. Scott has, by his own admission, lived Active Shooter and school safety for about two or three years now as he's gone through training and developed our program for update and innovation. So we're excited about that, very proud of him. He also is one of our patrol-level supervisors. He supervises a Uniform Division shift every day and also holds a supervision role within our Special Operations Unit, which is our SWAT team. Scott, would you step up and bring your family with you?
Step right back here. How are you? You are gorgeous. Come on back. Let's let your brothers, we've got some brothers here, huh? All right. Scott, we're very pleased and proud to present this Stars Award to you for your work with the Murfreesboro Police Department and with our city schools and for your undying faithfulness to the police department through the years. And so we're very proud and pleased to do this. Shake my hand there, got to do a little grip and grin. And why don't you introduce your family, and if you want to say a few words, be happy to.
This is my wife, Carrie, my daughter Ella, my son Alex, and my son Connor. I just, I appreciate the opportunity to work for the city of Murfreesboro and look forward to growing this program in the future.
Great. Well, we're particularly proud of you.
Thank you, sir.
And there's a little award there, and you want to hold on to that. And we are very proud of Alex and Connor and Ella. Ella, Ella, you're a pretty girl. You take care of your daddy, okay? You do that for me, all right?
It is, sir.
Okay. Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you once again for the encouragement that you all showed our employees through the support of this program. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Logan. And we're particularly proud of our Stars Award winners. And we know that we have at least 800 Stars Award winners in the city staff and all of our part-time folks, too. So it's certainly a pleasure to make this recognition tonight and every time we get a Stars Award winner. Councilmembers, you have your consent agenda before you. If you have any questions regarding any of those items, now would be the time to bring those up.
Move that we approve the consent agenda.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McFarland.
Second.
And second. Thank you. Motion and second. Ms. Wright, would you please call our roll for the first time tonight?
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
You also have the minutes of the April 18th regular meeting before you. Are there any additions, corrections to those minutes as they have been presented?
Not, Mayor. I move that they approved.
Seven.
All right. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
And these are third readings. We'll consider amendments to an ordinance to annex an area located along Memorial Boulevard north of West Thompson Lane. Do we have some amendments?
We do, Mayor. As I explained in my cover letter with the proposed ordinance with the additions underlined and the deletions struck through, this reflects the fact that this change is made at the request of the landowners rather than on the city's initiative, which seemed prudent in light of the legislation that we believe will be signed by the governor in the very near future.
All right. Thank you then. We'll consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance as amended to annex an area located along Memorial Boulevard north of West Thompson Lane.
Mayor, actually, you will need to take two votes. One, to adopt the amendments, and then to adopt it as amended.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt the amendment?
Move to adopt. Second.
Thank you. I need a supervision on that. Please call the roll on the amendments.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
And now we will consider for passage on third and final reading this ordinance as amended. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
At this time, we'll consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance to zone an area located along Memorial Boulevard north of West Thompson Lane to Highway Commercial, CH District simultaneous with annexation.
Move for passage on third reading.
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
And now also consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance amending 18 acres of the planned unit development, PUD District, located along Swanholm Drive consisting of parcel L of the Victory Station, PUD, as indicated on the attached map. Gross Builders is the applicant.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Now we'll consider amendments to an ordinance to annex an area located along South Church Street and Linford Drive at Joby Jackson Parkway and to adopt for the same a plan of services. Are there amendments, Ms. McGannon?
Yes, Mayor. As with the prior ordinance, the proposed changes are shown in the text that you received with the additions underlined and the deletions struck through. The amendments are proposed for the same reason.
All right. Thank you. Is there a motion? We adopt this amendment?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
At this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading an ordinance as amended to annex an area located along South Church Street and Linford Drive at Joby Jackson Parkway and to adopt for the same a plan of services.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
And we'll consider now for passage on second reading an ordinance to zone an area located along South Church Street and Linford Drive at Joby Jackson Parkway as Highway Commercial, CH District simultaneous with annexation.
Move for passage on second reading. Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
No.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
We'll consider now for passage on second reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Iron Gate Boulevard to Highway Commercial, CH District.
Move for passage on second reading.
Seven.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
At this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Memorial Boulevard to Highway Commercial, CH District.
Move for passage on second reading. Second.
A motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Consider for passage now on second reading an ordinance to amend the planned unit development, PUD District located along Rucker Lane, as indicated on the attached map. Adams and Parks Investments are the applicants.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
We'll consider now for passage on second reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Robert Rose Drive to residential multifamily 16, RM 16 District.
Move for passage on second reading.
Seven.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
We'll consider for passage on second reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Hazelwood Street to residential multifamily 16, RM 16 District.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
We'll consider for passage now on second reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Dill Lane to residential multifamily 16, RM 16 District.
Move for passage on second reading.
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
We'll consider now for passage on second reading an ordinance amending Chapter 21 Offenses and Miscellaneous Provisions, adding Article II Special Events.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
At this time, we'll consider the Planning Commission recommendations to schedule public hearings. A, to rezone approximately 6.68 acres located at 2315 Joby Jackson Parkway from single-family residential 15, RS 15 District to Highway Commercial, CH District. Ms. Linda Sneed, on behalf of Stones River Church, is the applicant. B, rezone approximately .7 acres located along East Main Street from residential multifamily 12, RM 12 District to Highway Commercial, CH District. Special Kids Incorporated is the applicant. And C, rezone approximately 2.92 acres from Commercial Friends, CF District to Highway Commercial, CH District. Approximately 20.98 acres from single-family residential 15, RS 15 District to Highway Commercial District. Approximately 14.8 acres from single-family residential 15, RS 15 District to local Commercial, CL District. Approximately 12 acres from single-family residential 15, RS 15 Districts to residential Zero Lot Line, RZ Districts. And approximately 50.9 acres in two tracks from single-family residential 15, RS 15 District to residential multifamily 16, RM 16 District along Veterans Parkway and Franklin Road, Highway 96, Swanson Developments. LP is the applicant.
Would you repeat that?
Yes, be happy to. From memory. Mr. Adelite?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. During this regular meeting on May 1st, the Plan Commission conducted public hearings on the three items that you just read about. After the public hearings, the Plan Commission recommended approval of each of them. There was very little public participation in these for whatever reason, so I don't believe there will be a whole lot at the council.
All right. Ms. McGannon, you have a date?
I do, Mayor. I would suggest June 6th.
June the 6th? Oops. So we have a budget public hearing that night also?
Yes.
All right. Councilmembers, you have June 6th. That meets with your approval. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Mr. Gilli, please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Adelite. This time, we'll consider recommendations of the Water and Sewer Board with regards to bids for the construction of the Southwest Relief Sewer. Mr. Gore, welcome.
Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for allowing me before you tonight. I'm going to try to get through this without a PowerPoint. I've got one in my, I've got one in my pocket, but I, that's my security blanket. But anyway, we started this project, kind of advanced planning, in 2009. This was a upgrade from an interceptor that we recognized as being a problem, having an 18-inch interceptor running into a 12-inch interceptor. Obviously, that's a bottleneck. So in 2011, we employed Wiser Company as a consultant to do the design for this project. We've gone on the other side of the river behind the General Mills and on the Yoplait, the General Mills side, and getting it off the Indian Hills Golf Course. We did have three bidders on April 16th. Garnet Construction, Smith Contractors, and S.J. Lewis. Garnet Construction is the low bid at $3.3,892,037. That was below our estimate. This has been something that's on the Water and Sewers Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan. We've planned to be funding this from our working capital reserve account, also just out of cash reserves. We do expect to have some damages on the Indian Hills Golf Course. We have received quotes. We've worked closely with them in developing this estimate. The estimate is $184,607.37. So we are adding that to the, to the low bid or requesting for approval to that in addition to the low bid so that that would also be paid out of working capital reserves. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Gore regarding this recommendation?
Darren, just curious, any particular reason you saw in the specs that came back as to why there's almost a half a million dollars difference between the low and the next to the lowest bidder?
Well, Garnet Construction did the Lytle Creek Interceptor that was recently done down South Church Street over into, towards Middle Tennessee Boulevard. They're also, they were given the Southwest Regional Force Main Project or the Pump Station Project. So they're going to have forces on site, and they're going to have mobilization already accounted for. Plus, they, they historically just provide the best bids. So there was nothing that jumped out about that other than the fact that they've just always given us good prices and they're going to be in town.
Okay. Any other questions?
When are you expecting the project to start?
Well, we would hope to start it probably within the next 30 days. We want to try to get on to the golf. We've made a commitment to Indian Hills to try to get that work done in December, January, January, February timeframe, where obviously golfing is only, only diehards are out there during that time. So to affect, yeah, to affect play as little as possible. So we, we really need to start pretty quickly in order to meet that, that timeline.
Who's your force in here tonight?
Any other questions? Here, these mumbles are not recognized.
Move we approve the recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Gilli.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Gore. Good luck. Consider for adoption a resolution adopting policies and procedures for the administration of federally tax-exempt debt obligations. Ms. Wright?
Mayor, this is something the city is required to do as a part of borrowing, to have tax-exempt debt and to make sure we're tracking the way it is spent properly according to IRS rules. And we would like to get this passed so we can send it on to our bond council.
All right. Any questions from Ms. Wright regarding this resolution? If not, is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. To adopt, please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
This time we'll hear a presentation from our chief of police with regards to the red light camera enforcement system in the city of Murfreesboro. Good evening, Chief Crispin.
Mayor and council members, good evening. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight. Do have some information. I know all of you received, I think, a letter last week that provided an update on some statistical information on the performance of that program. And I will be referring to that tonight, and that is included in your electronic agenda materials. And we'll get to that in just a few minutes. I also realize that we have a couple of members on council that were not on council when we began this process back in 2008. So if you will be patient and bear with me a little tonight, what I'd like to do is kind of walk back through that process a little bit of how we got to where we are now. There's been quite a bit of work that's done, not only locally here, and I'm very proud of our mayor and council because you led the way. Decisions that you made about automated enforcement shaped what the Tennessee General Assembly ended up codifying for law in the state of Tennessee about how some of this enforcement is done. And I'm very proud of you all for that, and I'm very proud of our city for taking a leadership position in that situation. Unfortunately, unlike Mr. Gore, I do have a PowerPoint, but there's only two slides on it, and I'll get to that in just a minute. And we do have a little piece of video footage that we want to share with you. As you are aware, we began this process in 2008 with the support of our mayor and council and our city management team. The police department began using automated enforcement to enforce red light signal violations in our city, and that was aimed at reducing the number of vehicle crashes at all of our intersections across the city. Prior to that, it was a weekly occurrence that someone would call me, one of our citizens would call me outraged, frankly, frustrated about the fact that people were disregarding signals in our city and the norm had almost become red plus one, red plus two, red plus three. And the question that I heard most often was, what are you going to do about that? How can you enforce that? How can you do something that brings some change to that? We'll talk in just a minute about what some of the conventional obstacles are to enforcement of red light violations using conventional police resources, and many of you, if not all of you, know what those things are. But I think it bears some discussion and a little bit of review of that. What I'd like to do first, if I can, is share a little footage with you that kind of help illustrates the problem and kind of where we are and where we have come from. And I will tell you, this is some video footage of about nine situations that are taken from our system. And some of these are pretty graphic. They're not new footage. It's footage that's been showed on local media, and so I don't think it'll be a big surprise when you see this footage, and we'll talk about these a little bit as we go along. But it's just a little bit of an example of some of the footage and some of the things that we've done here in Murfreesboro. I'll provide a little narration for you. This first location is camera number 171. That's at the intersection of South Church Street and Middle Tennessee Boulevard. You'll notice this is an early violation. There was about an eight-second gap from the time that light turned red until the time that violator went through the intersection, obviously caused a crash, some significant property damage. This is 179. This is John Bragg Highway and Rutherford Boulevard. Emergency vehicle was fully activated, emergency equipment, and obviously had a driver that failed to yield. 170 is South Church and Middle Tennessee. See a daytime crash there from about 10 o'clock in the morning. This next one is from Memorial and Northfield. And if memory serves me, I think this vehicle that violates the signal is going about 50 miles an hour, plows through that intersection. This is Broad Street and Northfield. And from witness statements, the last thing the passenger said to that driver was, are you going to stop? And clearly, he didn't, and luckily, no one hurt seriously. Again, this is South Church and Middle Tennessee. Vehicle stopped at a red light and rear-ended. Also, from South Rutherford and John Bragg, this is our bicycle. No, I'm sorry, that's another right angle. This is the bicyclist. Captured on video, was not a red light violation, but captured on video and is aiding in the investigation of that situation. And here we have a pedestrian at Middle Tennessee and South Church. Pedestrian is struck. Thankfully, the good news is, was treated and released the next day, was able to fly home to home overseas. He'd been here visiting. The driver that struck the pedestrian in that last video was subsequently arrested in charge of vehicular assault, leaving the scene of an injury accident, DUI, and some other things. And we could go on and on. I think the footage speaks for itself, and from my contacts with police chiefs in other cities across the state of Tennessee, some in metropolitan areas, I think that our experience has been much the same. What you told us and what city management told us from the outside was that any program like this needed to be based on safety. Wasn't about revenue, wasn't about generating revenue, was all about safety, and that's been our number-one goal from the start. That's how this program was established and that's how it continues to be operated. We wanted to do three things in terms of objectives as we started this program. We wanted to increase our ability to be able to effectively enforce traffic violations at signalized intersections. That's a real strategic and kind of a logistic enforcement problem. Certainly, if we were successful at that, we hoped that we would reduce personal injury and property damage crashes. But the big thing that we hope to do is if we were successful in that, hopefully, we would change some driver behaviors. If people began paying attention to those intersections and understanding that there was an automated, a technology-driven enforcement effort to try and encourage people to comply with those signals, that we would create some behavioral change. And statistically, I believe we've done that, and we'll talk about that in just a few moments. If we talk about conventional red light enforcement, think for a minute about how you do that with a police car and somebody that's going to stop a violator and write a ticket. First of all, we live in an age where any violator is going to want to see footage, so I've got to have a camera car. That means deploying some vehicle at an intersection or near an intersection in an unmarked car, likely, because you're not going to be very successful if it's a marked car. You'll have to have trained field of view on the intersection as the violations are observed. And then, once you observe a violation and capture it on mobile video cam with a police officer, somebody then has got to be able to make a traffic stop on that violator. Now, think about some of the intersections in our city that are multi-lane, heavily traveled, heavily congested with traffic, certainly at peak hours of the day, if not 24 hours a day. And when you begin to try to do enforcement in those locations, you've got a logistical nightmare. Where are you going to put the observation car? Where are you going to pull these people over that are observed committing violations? We actually had a situation in one of our larger intersections where, when we were pulling people over to write them tickets for violations of the signal, we were blocking private property, impeding, if you will, commerce because people couldn't get into the parking lots of some of the stores to shop, and that generated some complaints. The other thing that happens is, think about some of the big intersections that we have and the safety issues that are created when you have police officers trying to make observations, stop vehicles, and then get out in heavily congested thoroughfares to engage drivers and perhaps write them citations at the roadside. It's just not a good way to do business. There's some other limitations from that conventional enforcement approach. First of all, you can only see one. Let's take, for instance, the intersection that's right near us here at Broad and Church Street. Obviously, four-sided intersection, three to four lanes on either side. So you've got four, five avenues of approach, multi-lanes. If you're doing that conventionally, you only see one side at a time. So the other three sides of that intersection are going to be unobserved and unenforced, basically. As we said, tremendously labor-intensive, time-consuming, and inefficient use of resources. And as you all well know, our police officers are the most valuable resources, certainly, that we have. We've talked about the safety issues that are involved, but here's a point that I don't think people think about often. That puts the cost of enforcement on the taxpayers, because the taxpayer is funding the bill for the vehicle, the police officers, the time spent in enforcement, and everything connected to that enforcement operation. If we turn to a technology approach, then we bring some other things to the table that we don't have with that conventional kind of an approach. It's a safer, more efficient environment. One of the big things that happens is it allows us to take those police resources and focus them elsewhere, in inner cities and other places where we have needs for police presence and police activities. We often hear when we talk about technology that it should allow us to work smarter, not harder, and certainly, I think this technology does that. And as a byproduct of that, what happens is, it shifts the cost of enforcement from a taxpayer to the violator, because the people that pick up the tab for the red light enforcement system and for the adjudication of those citations are the people that are committing the violations. And as our city manager has very eloquently stated on a number of occasions, this is a voluntary program. You do not have to participate. All you have to do is stop when that signal is red. That's what the law says. That's what your intent is, and that's what the intent of our State General Assembly is. So this technology becomes a force multiplier in that what it does is allows us to free resources up to go out into the community and do those other policing things. In 2008, when we were looking at what it would cost if we took a police officer, put a police officer at every one of these six intersections where we have the cameras, put one on each side so they could see all four sides of that intersection, if we left them there for one shift, one eight-hour shift for a year, that'd cost us a million, $400,000. And that only gets eight hours. And that doesn't count fuel, it doesn't count vehicle costs, it doesn't count court costs, it doesn't count any of those things. Now, contrast that with what you get when you go to an automated enforcement system and you bring this technology in. Now, I don't have any of those resources deployed, and I've got a system that's running 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days of the year. And not only are we capturing violations, and we'll talk about those in a minute, but as our vendor has shared with us, since we've had these systems in place, there have been over 80 occasions when that footage has been pulled and reviewed for assistance in robberies, assaults, fatalities, a number of other things. And Mr. Kelly and I remember having that conversation some number of years ago about the ancillary benefits of a system that provides that kind of surveillance at those intersections. You know, traffic enforcement is an important thing. We were looking at statistic to bring this into perspective. In the city of Murfreesboro, last year, we had three murders. We had nine traffic fatalities. If you look at those numbers statewide, last year, we had 395 murders, and we had 1,021 traffic fatalities. Clearly, this is a major issue, but as all of you know, that's not the only thing that we have to deal with every day. We're dealing with prevention, suppression, and investigation of personal crimes, including gang and drug-related violent crimes, homicides. I know you saw in the paper where we had been able to get the person in custody that was responsible for the homicide on Gold Valley a week or so ago. Property crimes. Mr. Young and I stood outside a little bit ago and talked about property crime burglary issue we'd had in the neighborhood and what we were doing to deal with that. Certainly, that's an ongoing issue. And then, as we've said with Scott Newberg here a few minutes ago, vis-à-vis Newtown, Sandy Hook, homeland security is a big part of the lexicon of police officers in 2013. And there are some things that we do routinely behind the scenes, whether it involves a half marathon, Jazz Fest, local events of significance, that have a different kind of a connotation than they had 15 years ago. So anytime we can free officers up from enforcement-type duties for traffic enforcement and use technology to do that, that is a force multiplier, and it allows us to use our precious tax dollars as efficiently as we can. When we looked at these intersections, we thought about several different things on where to put the cameras to begin with, and those will continue to be factors we'll look at as we move forward. Quickly, some things. Crash rate at the intersection, traffic volume as measured by the average daily total, planned construction or redesign of intersections, locations where normal traffic would be limited due to congestion of the area, and we spoke about that, location and distribution of the intersections across the city. We did not want to put all of these cameras in close proximity or in one centralized area. We tried to move them around a little bit. How easy it would be to do these installations, and finally, the efficiency of the traffic signals. And as a result, as you are well aware, we ended up at Broad and Church Streets, Memorial and Northfield, Northwest Broad at Northfield, O'Fort Parkway and Thompson Lane at Chafin there, Rutherford Boulevard in John Bragg, and South Church at Middle Tennessee Boulevard. Now, there are four exemptions. There are four situations where citations aren't issued, and I'll talk a little bit about rejections in just a second. The first one is, if you have an emergency vehicle that goes through that light with its lights flashing, it's specifically exempted by city ordinance and state statute. And obviously, those occur with some regularity. Funeral escorts are exempted by local ordinance and by state statute. The big one, and again, where our mayor and council took the lead, was on right turns on red. Those are specifically not included, excluded, if you will, for enforcement, with the exception of two places. The one that we, we have two double right-hand turns. One is at O'Fort and Thompson Lane. The other one is at Northwest Broad and Northfield. That inside lane at both of those locations is enforced, because if you make a right turn on red from that inside lane, it's an unprotected right-hand turn where somebody else has the right of way based on the signal. And if you turn right on red from that inside lane, you're apt to find yourself in the middle of an injury crash. So we enforce those two. And finally, and this is an interesting one, people don't understand this a lot of time. If you are at an intersection, any part of your vehicle is touching that bold white stop bar that's defined by ordinance as to the place to where you're supposed to stop, if any part of your vehicle is touching that stop bar, those images are rejected. The benefit of the doubt goes to the violator. The only way you're going to get a ticket from one of these systems is if you're behind that white stop bar, light turns red, and then you go through it. Now, lady and gentleman, that's a run. That's not a near miss. That's a run. You don't get tickets if you go through yellow lights. You don't get tickets if you're anywhere near that stop bar and any part of your vehicle is touching it. Let me give you an example. For the year 2011-12, we captured 43,877 images at those intersections. 23,598 of those images were rejected because they didn't meet the criteria for a violation. We ended up issuing 20,279 violations out of 43,000 images that were captured. For 2012-13, and these are fiscal year numbers, and this is through April the 31st, we captured 42,831 images. Of those thus far, 24,208 have been rejected, and 18,803 have resulted in citations. We think it's a very fair system, and the benefit of the doubt is always going to go to the driver because that's the way this system was designed to work. It was designed to provide for the safety of those intersections, and it was designed to be a system based around safety, not revenue, and it continues to be that way. In our Murfreesboro model, the mayor, council, city management staff, and police determined, as we've said, that single lane right turns on red would be excluded for photo enforcement because we didn't think these represented the serious safety issues that those right angle collisions did, as you saw a few minutes ago. And I mentioned the two right turns on red that we do enforce. I will say again that the Tennessee General Assembly debated this for almost an entire session one year and carried over into the next session. And at the end of that process, one of the people that was of big assistance to law enforcement throughout the state of Tennessee, as well as in Murfreesboro, was Senator Tracy, who was and is still the chair of the Senate Transportation Committee. The statutory revisions that they put in place almost mirrored what we do here in Murfreesboro and pretty much outlawed right turn on red violations anywhere in the state of Tennessee unless, by an automated enforcement system, unless there was signage that said no right turn on red, like those two lanes that we have. They copied what we did, which I think speaks very highly of our city, our leadership, and our system. In 2010, American Traffic Solutions, ATS, acquired the city's contract from our original vendor, TrafficPacks. They currently have a five-year contract with us that expires in 2016, and just recently finished an upgrade to our system. They put all new technology in all six intersections and all 22 camera locations. And one of the things that they did was they added a wireless vehicle detection system that now allows us to monitor all the lanes around those intersections, not just two or three that were monitored before. We think that as this system grows and matures, that we'll see continued improvement in our crash reduction and some of the things that are making driving a little safer around those intersections. If I may, let's talk about capital infrastructure costs for just a moment. There's been a lot of discussion about the fact that a good portion of the revenue generated by the issuance and payment of these citations goes to the vendor who is located outside the state of Tennessee, and that's true. But there's a good reason for that. With ATS, as was the case with TrafficPacks, what we've done since the beginning of the program is we've contracted with the vendors to provide that capital infrastructure investment cost, which covers installation, maintenance, and operation of the equipment. They own the equipment. We do not want to own the equipment. And you say, well, chief, why not? This is evolving, emerging technology. You know how quickly that changes and is outdated. It also has a significant maintenance and operation piece. So basically, what we've asked to do contractual is for them to provide all of that upfront at no cost to the city. This last update for 22 camera locations, the average cost for each of those camera locations was $110,000 apiece, 2.42 million. City didn't spend a penny. The people, again, as we say, that are the violators, the people that are committing the violations, are the ones that are defraying that cost, and they do that because, in this case, ATS receives a portion of each one of the fines that are paid to the city in order to defray those costs, and there's a percentage in the contract of how we share those fees. Very quickly, system collects still photographs and video images. You saw some of those earlier. They are reviewed by the ATS staff before they ever get to us, based on our enforcement model. We talked a few minutes ago about some of the rejections. And the only ones that make it to us are the ones that represent clear or reasonably clear violations. And once we get those, Officer Don Schubert, who's sitting to my left over here, and I'll introduce him better in just a minute, he or, we have a couple of officers that relieve him when he's away from duty, they review every single violation. They look at the still photographs, they look at the video images from start to finish, and they are the ones that decide if those citations get issued, just the same way we do if a police officer writes a paper ticket. Because of those things, we've issued about 75,000 civil citations over the course of the program. Crashes at all signalized intersections in our city virtually are down for much of that five-year period, and that includes side angle and rear-end collisions, and we'll look at those data tables in just a moment. We believe the system is working, and we're excited about the things that it's doing because we believe it's changing some behavior. One of the ways that we try to measure that is we look at crash reports. We've been doing that since the start of the program and gathering data from that crash database. When we began this, we had 122 signalized intersections. Now, we have 143. And the data that you saw in the tables that were provided for you came from those data sets. One of the things that we asked staff to do particularly was to go into those reports and look at the causative factors, the contributing factors, if you will, to look at rear-end collisions particularly, to see if, when the investigator worked that crash, was the crash, the rear-end crashes that were noted caused by the system, or was it noted that they had some other causation? None have attributed the red light system as being the causative factor to the crash. The causes of the collisions most often are speeding, following too closely, inattentive, or all three. I would make note that those things are all against the law as well. In your materials, you have, I think, a couple of charts that I want to share. We can just put these up on the screen briefly, and I anticipate that we will, if this is not on the website, it will be. And I'm going to reverse these. First, if I could, and this is going to be out of order in your materials too, if you'll bear with me. If you'll go to the first set of data or the second set of data that is captioned, "Crash Trend Data for All Six Intersections with Automated Enforcement." These are the smaller data sets, and there are a couple of data anomalies in here. If I can call your attention to that first set of tables, you see total crashes at intersections with automated enforcement. These are the places that you would think that people would be more attentive and that you'd see significant changes in driving behavior. We began in 2007-8 with 173 of these crashes. If you look at the most recent current, or the most recent completed set of data for 2011-12, there was 160 crashes last year. If you look at the percentage of change from 2007-8 to 2011-12, that's 173 down to 160, about a 7% decrease. And you'll notice that it's trending downward in the years after 2008-9. Went up a little bit right after we put the systems in and then trended down. There is an anomaly in that data. You'll notice that in 2011-12, we went up by about 13 crashes from the year before. But interesting to note that through the end of 2013, the first six months of this fiscal year, we'd only had 49 total crashes at intersections with automated enforcement, which we believe is a good signal and should trend us well for the remainder of the fiscal year. If you look at rear-end type crashes at intersections with automated enforcement, we began in 2007-8 with 102 crashes, trended up in 8-9 and 9-10, and then began to come down in 10-11, and remains the same for 11-12. That one actually shows a little bit of an increase, about 10 more crashes over that four-year period, rear-end type crashes at those intersections where you have automated enforcement. where you have automated enforcement. But we think we see that trend trending downward or stable, and the projected trend for that actually looks, again, pretty significant if trends continue as they are. If you look at side angle crashes, and those are certainly the most dangerous ones, we began in 2007-8 with seventy-one. In 2011-12, we had forty-eight of those. That's about a thirty-two percent decline over that period, and you would notice that there is a trend downward every year after 2007-8 until you get to 11, '12, and a little bit of a data anomaly there because it spiked back up a little bit. Now, that's interesting data, but that only tells half the story, and I suggest to you that that's not the most powerful half of the story. If you look at that next set of data, where we have total crashes at intersections with automated, let me see here, total crashes at all signalized intersections. Remember, we have a hundred-and-forty-three of those. We began that set of data in 2007-8. We had sixteen-hundred-and-ninety-two crashes at signalized intersections. That number is a thousand-and-three as of 2011-12. That's about a forty percent decrease at all signalized intersections in the city. And I can't stand here and tell you with a hundred percent certainty that that's because of our automated enforcement system, but I believe it surely is, as I'm standing here, that people are paying more attention to red light cameras because they see those flashes going off. They may not know exactly where all of those red light cameras are, even though they're very clearly marked as mandated by law. And what you've seen there at signalized intersections is the continuing downward trend. As late as 2011-12, you might notice a drop of about thirty-two percent in the year, from the year before, fourteen-seventy-five in 2010-11, down to ten-oh-three for 11, '12. Rear-end crashes, we began '07-8 with a thousand-seventy-seven. For 2011-12, we're down to six-forty-four. That's a significant difference, ladies and gentlemen. About a forty percent decrease there. And again, after a spike upward that first year that we were in full swing, the trend is downward from there on. Side angle crashes at all signalized intersections, six-hundred-and-fifteen in 2007-8, down to three-hundred-and-fifty-nine in 2011-12, a forty-one percent decrease. And again, you've got one data anomaly there in 2010-11, but otherwise, the trend is downward for crash data at all signalized intersections, which, if you remember at the outset, we said that's what we wanted to do. We wanted to change some behaviors about red lights and how people approach signalized intersections in the city of Murfreesboro, to change behavior, to improve safety, and to make all of our intersections safer inside the city of Murfreesboro. It might do me well to stop right there and see if you all have any questions about either set of that data, or if I can answer any questions about that part.
Any questions for the chief?
Yeah, Chief, I'll ask. Your data of crashes is going down, but the volume of traffic is increasing through each intersection per year, so wouldn't that make your statistical data even more proving that it's reducing the number of crashes?
We believe so, Mr. Young, and not only that, and forgive me for reiterating this point, but we've added a number of intersections since we began. We continue to add intersections. We believe the traffic volume on our streets continues to increase. But as you rightly point out, I think the statistical significance of that data as the crashes decline in those intersections is very important. Other questions?
Other questions?
Chief Chrisman?
Yes, sir.
On the non-signalized intersections, from 2007, or the non-camera intersections.
Mm-hmm.
In 2007, it was sixteen-ninety-two, according to your report here, and I'm going to disregard the actual projected because that's just a guesstimation.
It is.
And I'll stick with the last hard-firm data we have, which is 2012. It was down to a thousand-and-three, a dramatic improvement on non-camera intersections.
It's dramatic.
On the other hand, on the intersections with cameras, we went from a hundred-and-seventy-three to a hundred-and-sixty during that same time period. So very little improvement at all on the signalized intersections.
And you've seen that move because, I mean, you're certainly correct. The year before, a hundred-and-forty-seven crashes, which was a fairly significant decrease from the year before, percentage-wise, not a fairly significant number in terms of the overall number of crashes. Again, I think, you know, you would expect, I think, that you'd see a certain type of behavior around the intersections that are controlled and signed. So I don't have a good explanation for that, other than to say the data is what it is.
Right. And I do think most people driving around Murfreesboro know which intersections have cameras on.
They do.
I mean, which, you know, it's a number that almost indicates the opposite of what I think we're seeing. The tickets and revenues were up for 2012. Is that not correct?
Yes, sir, they were.
And that's on the signalized, or the cameraed, intersections?
And the reason for that was because when ATS took over the contract, one of the things that they did was they went through and had to rework the intersections, and so we had some intersections that were down during part of that time, that were not operational, that were not operating at full capacity. So for fiscal 2011, there was a dip in revenue and a dip in what we paid out actually to ATS from the year before in FY-10 and from FY-12.
But that would indicate more people are going through the lights?
Yes, sir, it would.
Even with the cameras on?
And hopefully that the intersections are working more efficiently with the new technology.
Right. Of the tickets that were not paid, when we mailed out the notice and told them to pay them, do you have any idea what percentage of the tickets were not paid?
I do not, Mr. Smotherman. I know that, Mr. Lyons, you might help me here. I think, or Mr. Crumey, I think it was as late as last year, or maybe the year before last, that we changed the model that we were using for collection through city court.
We changed headers on the uncollected collections.
That was something we really brought up in budget a couple of years ago when they signed up the uncollected fines. We had been trying to do that really in-house.
We had, we had a vendor, we had attempted to try it in-house, but then realized outsourcing that was going to be most effective.
And since we've outsourced it, my understanding is they collect on about thirty percent of those tickets that we turn over to them. So about seventy percent of the people who don't pay never pay.
They would go into collections. We'll be glad to get you some data on that.
Yeah, but once it goes into collections, we're released to the responsibility of trying to collect them, I guess, but of the, whatever that percentage is, that doesn't pay the tickets, only thirty percent of them, once it's turned over to the collection agency, from what I understand, does pay the ticket, which leads to my next question. What is the punishment if a person doesn't pay the ticket?
Well, if they, if they don't pay it within, you know, what the ordinance provides for, then it's turned over to collection, collection then goes through that process, and hopefully is able to recover that through the collection process. From the outset, these citations were not intended to be moving violations.
Right.
They do not go on your driving history. And...
It goes on your credit record, doesn't it, Ms. McGinnan?
Well, they changed the state law because that was happening to people to make sure that there was more notice. So it still happens, but it takes longer. There's more of a process to it, but that is a consequence ultimately. Yes, sir.
Doesn't reflect on your driver's license or your...
No.
...ability to license a vehicle or red.
Right. So really, if you run lights, as long as you've got plenty of money, you'd probably be okay because you'd never get in trouble with your license because you're running intersections with camera signals.
That's the way the state law is set up. The General Assembly decided that, not the city.
Right.
I mean, the city had made that as its approach, but that's not within the city's control.
And I know in the recent past, I've received a couple of letters from tourists who visited Murfreesboro, and those tourists said that they would never come back to Murfreesboro because of those signalized intersections. And, you know, there is an impact, a tourist impact, if we are turning tourists away because of the traffic lights. And I guess my last question, in the situation of Broad, turning off on, to Northville Boulevard, so you'd be turning...
From Broad.
From Broad, onto Northville Boulevard, turning to the left, which would you be crossing the traffic? If you were on a motorcycle and you pulled up at that intersection at night, would you receive a ticket if you sat at that intersection for maybe twenty minutes and the light never changed and you went through that intersection? Because the camera will flash.
Well, my recollection is that there is a limited exemption in the statute for those situations.
For motorcycles.
And one of the things that we do, I think, is take those kinds of special circumstances into account. When Officer Schubert is reviewing that footage, and as I say, he does those one by one. In fact, I think at four o'clock, I said, "What do you got?" He said, "I've got a hundred more to look at today." So those would be the kind of things that would be taken into account and could be exempted or rejected based on that.
Because you could clearly run the red light, and I think state law says that you are allowed to run an intersection on a motorcycle because the inability of the motorcycle to change the, to change the light.
Right.
It doesn't trigger the signals and stuff. So I think that it's okay to run a light on a motorcycle as long as you use great caution.
As you say, there's a statutory exemption for it.
Right. That's all the questions I've got.
And I guess I'd go back to say, back to the tourist piece. Certainly, we want people to come to Murfreesboro and enjoy themselves here and support our local economy and enjoy the amenities that we have in the city. But I think, I would think we would hope they'd be responsible while they're here.
I...
And obey our laws and obey our ordinances that are designed for the safe passage and the safe travel of all of our motorists. And, you know, whenever we get one of those letters, typically, we write them back and say, "Sorry, you got a ticket. I hope you'll join us again," or "Visit us again." One of the things that we want to make sure of is that when you're here, you'll have a safe trip and return home safely. So I guess, as I would, just in closing here, a couple of things. We've had a working group that's worked in the past to review potential expansion of this program, and that previously included staff from police, transportation, city court, and planning and engineering. And from preliminary studies previously, we'd identified as many as eight intersections that probably were great targets to add this type of enforcement to. Again, large intersections, high traffic density, you know, a lot of laneage in those things to be considered. What I would anticipate that we would do is, at some point, reconvene that body, bring back some recommendation of potential expansion of the program to some other intersections for council's consideration and review. Not ready to do that tonight. Obviously, there's other information and research that would need to be done before that's prepared. But I guess at this time, I'd just like to thank you and your predecessors for your support of this program and the people that have contributed to the operation and success of it. I mentioned Senator Tracy earlier for the work that he's done. Got some special people here tonight, as I mentioned, that have done a lot of work. Don Schubert is our primary red light enforcement officer. Don, would you stand up and step over this way, sir, if you would? Most of those seventy-five-thousand citations that have been issued, he has viewed almost every one of them, with some few exceptions. He is producing, I suppose, output that has a tremendous impact on the safety of our motoring public, and certainly, I'm very proud of him and proud of the work that he does every day. Sergeant Kyle Evans is here. Kyle, would you step over and join us for a minute? Kyle, you all know is our PIO, but when the state went to automated crash reporting a few years ago, it made the data extraction from those crash reports a little bit more difficult. And Kyle and David, or Kyle and Don, rather, have worked pretty tirelessly to extract that data for the reports that you have tonight, and we think that's good hard data, and it's been vetted heavily. The last person I'd like to introduce you to is Lieutenant Don Fanning. Don, would you come up here for just a minute? Don is the ranking officer that reviews all of the rejections. Whenever Don Schubert rejects a violation, they automatically go to a member of supervision to review, to make sure that there are no problems with that, put a second set of eyes on that for accountability purposes. And Don, as well, Don Fanning, reviews all of the violations that deal with police officers, sheriff's deputies, EMS, firefighters, whoever. And just to refresh your memory, they get tickets too, just like everybody else gets them, and they pay them, just like everybody else pays them. So we're very proud of them and proud of the work they do to help move our program along. We do have David Mast here from ATS in the back. David is here just as a resource, but David, we're glad to have you with us tonight. And with that, I think we'll close the presentation and be glad to answer any other questions that you might have about our system, how it works, or the work that it's doing for our city.
Any questions, any comments? We certainly appreciate the work that you do, and we do want to make our city safe. Anytime I have ever gotten a ticket, and fortunately, it's been a long, long time ago, I don't think I was in a good mood, and I probably didn't say anything nice about the location where I received the ticket. And anecdotally, that evidence probably stuck with me a long time, and I understand that. But I think by the same token, I don't have people coming to me saying, "We've got to stop these red light runners," as we did for many years when I first began to serve on the council. We had a lot of folks that would constantly talk about red light runners, people running red lights, and say, "Murfreesboro was terrible about running red lights." So I, for one, remember those days, and I don't hear those comments anymore, and I appreciate that, and I think the motoring public does too. Eddie, to your comments, I think because of traffic in some ways, the platooning of traffic, that there's really not as many opportunities for run a red light as there used to be because there's so many people in front of you trying to shop or get home. And so you can't get them out of the way to run the traffic, I mean, to run a red light.
We like traffic, don't we?
Yeah, we do. I've been in quite a lot of it here lately, and it just seems to be growing. And I think for our business owners, that's probably good. For mom and daddy trying to get home, that's not so much good. But I think that probably goes into it a little bit. I'm a little bit surprised, as you are, to these specific intersections that we picked, that we don't see the kind of the dramatic drop that we've seen across the city. But by the same token, if we were going to be in a revenue business, picking six intersections out of a hundred-and-twenty-two to put them into certainly didn't make us a very efficient collector of fines. And I think that pretty well shows that we really weren't in it for the revenue part of it. We really were in it to try to get the motoring public to pay attention and to alter their behavior patterns. And certainly, all of us probably get to an intersection and slow down when we see it's a stale green, just like we learned in driver's school, and learn not to run a red light and wonder which cameras are going to be looking at us next. So I appreciate your efforts. I don't see how you do it every day. Please don't ask me to do it every day, but I appreciate those efforts, Officer Schubert, for taking good care of that and the supervision that you have, and for being able to provide us these numbers. I mean, it makes a big difference. And when you see the dramatic results of what happens or can happen when somebody runs a red light, I think that pretty well cements it in my mind that it's a good system, and it's one that we ought to look at, hopefully, to continue and sustain across our city.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, Mr. McFarland?
I just want to make one quick comment, and this really goes to all four of you, you gentlemen, that, red light enforcement aside, that I think the one thing as a council that we appreciate is when you guys come and talk to us, or you see us out on the street, or you see us out in the community, that when you talk to us, we know that you've got truly the best interests of Murfreesboro in your minds. And there's no, you know, you read the different comments and things that are in the paper about revenue, revenue enforcement or making money. And I think when we started this program, and when chief came up, and when we had discussions with chief outside of, outside of council, it was never brought up about that you were doing it to make money, that it was always about safety. And it's hard to explain that when, you know, people are not around you guys like we are. But I just want to tell you that, you know, when we talk about the buck stops here, that you guys always have been, if we get information from you, we can take it to the bank, that we know it's information that we need to know. So I want you to know that's very valuable to us, and we appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. You're very kind. I appreciate that very much. And I appreciate your patience tonight, particularly those of you that have heard this story before, but I felt like it was important for Mrs. Scales-Harris and Mr. Smotherman, because you might not have... Scales-Harris and Mr. Smotherman because you might not have heard it prior to your service on the council. One other thing I'll add, Lieutenant Fanning has another vested interest. He is the commander of our fatal accident crash team and does a wonderful job there, but unfortunately, all too often sees the outcomes when people don't observe the rules of the road and operate their vehicles safely. Thank you for your time tonight and your patience, and we're all honored to be of service.
Chief Christman, please don't take that that I'm encouraging people to run red lights, though, because I'm not.
I did not, sir.
And we have a police force that is absolutely second to none. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all very much.
Thank you all. Thank you for your presentation, for being here. Ms. Wright, are there any beer permit applications?
Yes, Mayor, we have a few tonight. I have two special event applications, one from Middle Tennessee Medical Center Foundation. They have two event locations, one in May, one in September. I have a special event application from Oakland's Association, and their event is actually tomorrow night at 525 East College Street. I have a application from Derby Wings. They did this last year. They want to have beer at the Bumpus Harley-Davidson. It's this event that they're going to have beer at least every 30 days on the exterior parking lot area of Bumpus Harley-Davidson, and...
Beer and motorcycles, that don't make sense either.
And then we have two that are not quite done. They're lacking their building codes inspections. One is a market at 1660 Middle Tennessee Boulevard, Suite H, and one is a restaurant at 452 North Thompson Lane, Suite C. They have met our requirements other than the building and codes inspections, and I recommend approval of the others and permission to issue the last two when they are done.
All right. Based on this recommendation, is there a motion that we accept?
A motion that we accept.
Second? Thank you. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Scales-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarlane?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. You have the statements to be considered for payment before you. Are there any questions regarding any of those bills, or shall we pay the bills?
Maybe pay the bills.
Second.
Thank you. A motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Scales-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarlane?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Are there board and commission appointments? Mr. Lyons?
Yes, sir. To the power board, I am recommending the reappointment of Dr. Jim Burton, Mr. Rick Hardesty, and Mr. Robert Scales.
Move that we accept the recommendation of the city manager.
That.
All right. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Scales-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarlane?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. And I also would like to reappoint Ms. Judy Smith to the Murfreesboro Housing Authority.
Maybe refer to the mayor's recommendation. Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Scales-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarlane?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Other business from the staff or the council to come before the council at this time?
Mayor, I just, Mr. Lyons sent us an email regarding a question that I had asked at the last council meeting about the Gateway. I just thought it was interesting that you, what the information you sent, and thought you may, would go over that quickly, just for those of the viewing public.
Sure. I'd be glad to. As you all know, the city council certainly had an incredible vision with the Gateway project, with the acquisition of land, the investment in Medical Center Parkway and the interchange. So we've gone back to take a look at the property taxes generated in the Gateway District. In 2012, the property tax assessment for the Gateway District was $168 million. That's up $36 million from the last time we put this information together in 2009. That means in 2012, over $2.1 million in property taxes were generated to the city of Murfreesboro out of the Gateway District. Likewise, to Rutherford County, it generated $4.1 million in property taxes to Rutherford County. So, you know, combined, that's a $6.2 million property tax investment for the community out of the Gateway District. Certainly, that doesn't include sales tax figures. We're going to see what we can do to try to get some estimates on that. You know, we're not able to look at individual retailers, but we are going to see what we can do to try to find out what the sales tax impact would be in the Gateway District. But again, you know, we certainly have recouped our investment many times over, put some folks to work, and generated dollars for our city government.
I remember several years ago that somehow it was brought up that, I want to say that that sales tax figure's in the three to, three to $4 million range on an annual basis. And that was several years ago when we were seeing a decline in sales tax revenue. So that was the one thing, I think, that once I saw that information, that if you figure what goes into the county, the city, I mean, we really are looking close to $8 million annually. So, and still, I guess, have land out there. Hopefully, we can attract some...
Part of the information planning Mr. Crumley helped us with, you know, shows that the Gateway District now represents 8 percent of our property tax revenue in the city of Murfreesboro, and that doesn't include what will happen in the future. The city still has 100 acres available. There's certainly some large parcels along Medical Center Parkway still available for development. So again, as that momentum continues to build, certainly, great things have happened for Murfreesboro and really a credit to the vision that was established in the late '90s.
And I didn't ask for that for a pat on the back. I just thought it was interesting that we get to budget time, that if we start looking at the budget and we said, "Okay, the Gateway area is not there," then that's a significant portion of the budget that we would have to be figuring out what to be with. So, anyway, thank you for getting that together.
All right. Anything else?
Well, my office is out there way, St. Andrews, and I can tell you, there's a whole lot of foreign cars. I see, well, put them in Bedford County and different places, coming here to shop and spend their money and going back home, which I love for them to come now. Come on, spend your dollars, but get on back to the house.
That's one of the things I...
Safely, safely.
Mayor, that's one of the funny things I tell my mother-in-law, "How can I miss you if you never leave?" On that note...
Sure. Sure.[1753.26]